Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Oregon Village Board. This is Monday, March 5th, 2018 at 5:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Brent Hauer.
Here.
Boudreaux.
Here.
Staten.
Here.
Grenier.
Bollig.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Thank you. And our first item of business is number three, the annual Police Department Award Ceremony. And I would note for people watching, the Board will take a short break after this to join the staff of the Police Department next door for some refreshments, so we're looking forward to that. But I'm going to turn this over to Chief Yule. Welcome to the Police Department, all of your staff, all the officers. And I know on behalf of the Board, we're very appreciative of the wonderful job you do. Chief Yule, it's all yours.
Thank you. Let's all rise for the presentation of colors with the county sheriff's. Orders. Ready. Halt. Shoulder. Halt. Right. Halt. Present. Halt. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shoulder. Halt. Order. Halt. Ready. Halt. Shoulder. Halt. Right. Halt. Present. Halt. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shoulder. Halt. Order. Halt. Order. Halt. Order. Halt. Order. Ready. Step. Coats. Ready. Two. Ready. Two. Ready. Two. Ready. Two. Coats. Please be seated, thank you.
First of all, please join me in thanking the Dink County Sheriff's Office, their Honor Guard for presenting the colors at our inaugural ceremony. So, thank you, Dink County. I would also like to thank the Board and our village administrator for allowing us to hijack their meeting for our award ceremony tonight. So, thank you very much for that. I would also like to thank the village administrator and the Board for their continued support of the Police Department. I've been saying this many times in the two and a half years that I've been chief, that if it were not for their support, I would not have taken the leap of faith to become the chief, at least not here. So, thank you for your support, I really appreciate that. You guys and gals have been extremely supportive when I've asked for items that I help feel will make our agency more effective. I want to assure you that this administration is focused on enhancing our officers by providing training, equipment, and technology in order to make sure that we have a police department that this community can be proud of. In the short time that I've been here, we have hired seven new police officers and are about to hire one more, bringing our sworn staff to 19. It's important to have adequate staffing, not only to serve our growing community, but to keep our officers safe as well while they're doing their jobs. We have made enhancements to our record management system, our policies and procedures, we've become an accredited agency, and made salary adjustments to help attract the most qualified candidates in the area. We've accomplished this, all because of your support. Since this night is about thanking our Police Department employees, would those members of the Oregon Police Department please stand and be recognized for your hard work and dedication? Stand up. Thank you. Go ahead and sit down now. So, I've been doing this a long time, and often forgotten part of our job is our family members, our spouses, our significant others, our kids. We could not do this job without them, without their support. They are often our rock in hard times. So, family members, please stand. This job requires a lot of sacrifice, not only by us, but by our family members as well. We miss holidays, we miss weekends, we miss birthdays, we miss anniversaries, and the list goes on. So, without their support, we could not do our jobs. So, thank you again. And that's why it's important to have nights like this. I was a little surprised when I came that I learned that, as far as anyone knows, we've never done an award ceremony. So, this is our inaugural ceremony, and I think it's important to do that just because of the job that we do and the things that we have to overcome. So, we formed an awards committee, we drafted an employee recognition policy, which the Board approved, and thus, our first award ceremony. So, with that, I would like to get started with the first award. Would Officer Pierce please come up? So, Officer Pierce is actually one of our newest officers, and he's already making a difference in our community. This first award is for life-saving award. So, I will first describe the award. This award is for any employee whose action directly contributed to the saving or significantly prolonging of a human life. Officer Tanner Pierce, and these are the words that are going to appear on the plaque, Officer Tanner Pierce is hereby awarded this life-saving award for his outstanding police performance in the saving of a human life and the display of initiative, capability, and attention to duty, thereby earning respect and admiration for himself and the Oregon Police Department. On November 16th of last year, at approximately 12:16 AM, Officer Pierce responded to a call of a person who was not breathing and did not have a pulse. Officer Pierce provided life-saving measures by giving chest compressions, and through his actions, the person was revived. So, I would like to present the life-saving award to Officer Pierce. We'll get more pictures later. The second award is the J. Edgar Hoover Award. Will Officer Will Jansen please step forward? This award is for successfully completing additional training to garner new skills in the field of criminal justice. It recognizes officers who continually seek a lifetime of education and advancement. And the words on his plaque say that Officer Jansen is hereby awarded the J. Edgar Hoover Award for successfully completing additional training to garner new skills in the field of criminal justice. On May of last year, he became certified as a drug recognition expert after completing 132 hours of training. His hard work and commitment has assisted the Oregon Police Department in providing yet another way to keep the community safe. Officer Jansen actually helped create the drug recognition expert policy for our department and has proven to be a valuable resource to fellow officers and has been called several times to outside agencies to assist with their drug recognition needs. So, congratulations, Officer Jansen. Our next award is for outstanding service. Would Support Services Supervisor Rudy Trace please come forward? So, this award is for sustained delivery of high level of service which demonstrates professional excellence, an employee whose daily work indicates an awareness of departmental operating philosophy, goals and objectives, and exceptional competence at fulfilling these objectives. Her plaque will read, Support Services Supervisor Rudy Trace is hereby awarded the outstanding service award for the sustained delivery of high level of service which demonstrates professional excellence. Throughout 2017, Rudy was instrumental in the implementation of our new records management system, which has helped the department become more reliable, streamlines department procedures, and improves data extraction capability, and overall improves the efficiency of our Police Department. We couldn't have done this without the help and supervision of our Support Services Supervisor, Rudy Trace. So, Rudy, thank you. All right, the next award is called the Chief's Award of Excellence. No, I did not make this award up. So, would Detective Sergeant Chad Schaub, Support Services Supervisor Rudy Trace, and Lieutenant Jenny Pegenkoff come forward? I'm going to have to present the award. So, this recipient is chosen for their reliability, quality of work, initiative, professionalism, and uniqueness of contribution. They reflect the department's core values, exhibit good work ethic, and set a positive standard for the department. They are someone who recognizes service first. On the plaque, it will read for reliability, quality of work, initiative, professionalism, uniqueness of contribution. They exhibit the department's core values and sets positive standard within the Oregon Police Department. From 2015 to 2017, these three assisted with the reorganization, inventory, and updating of our property room. This was quite the project. During this process, approximately 10,000 items were inventoried. There were cases from all the way back to 1987 to present. They also released or destroyed approximately 4,200 pieces of evidence. So, not only was this a monumental task, it took a long time to do it. We had outside agencies come in and certify the property room, so now it's certified as well. So, for their hard work and dedication in this huge project, thank you and congratulations. Our last award is for Officer of the Year. Would Officer Kevin Gowan please come forward? So, I'm going to read a little bit about what the award is and how it was presented, and then I'm going to have Mary Kay come up and present the Optimist Award because it's sponsored by the Optimist Club. So, this award is given to one officer for sustained service and teamwork. This award is given yearly to a sworn officer, exclusive of sworn supervisory and administrative staff, based on nominations by their fellow employees. This award is presented to recognize the officer that consistently performed at a high level, who has excelled in teamwork to help the department achieve its missions. The officer's daily work reflects an awareness of departmental operating procedures, core values, and objectives. And now, I'm going to read a little bit about what your coworkers said about you. I'm going to just highlight some things, okay? They said he is always very helpful and kind to everyone in the community, and that's important to be kind. Kevin is always willing to pick up extra overtime to help the department or fellow officers. He always appears to give 100% when he's wearing the uniform. Kevin always keeps a positive attitude and seems to make everyone around him a better person. Nicely done. Kevin always displays an upbeat and friendly attitude, which is difficult to maintain in this line of work, but is very important to do so. Kevin went above and beyond with working overtime and helping to reduce the burden on other officers. Another person said Kevin worked more overtime than anyone else in the department. Apparently, you picked up some overtime. During the entire period, Kevin remained upbeat and positive. Kevin's always got a smile on his face, very positive guy. We appreciate that. Lastly, Kevin is always willing to help other officers, especially without being asked. Kevin has picked up multiple OT shifts. There we go again. Kevin is always very energetic, he has a great attitude and outlook, Kevin is an ideal role model for young officers. He's always able to work hard and does the right thing all the time. So, just a few words from your fellow officers, so congratulations on Officer of the Year. I'm going to have Mary Kay come up and talk a little bit about the award and the presentation.
Whoops. Thank you. Hello, everybody. I'm delighted to be here, and especially hearing all the wonderful information about Kevin. I mean, he's the ideal person that the Optimist Club likes to recognize. He fits our criteria perfectly. Before I honor Kevin, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Optimist Club. We're part of an international organization that supports youth in the communities and throughout the world. And the Optimist motto is to bring out the best in youth. So, to this end, here locally, we do fundraisers and we have service projects to support youth in the Oregon Brooklyn community. I'm just going to talk about a few of our favorite programs. The first is the STAR program that we do in coordination with the school district, and we honor students at various grade levels. So, for example, at Rome Corners, we have the Shining Star Program, and we recognize two amazing youth at the beginning of each month. And then, at the middle school, we have the Rising Star Program, and they have three different assemblies throughout the year, and at each assembly, we recognize six youth. And then, at the high school level, we recognize a graduating senior each month. And all of these youth have the same criteria, and they're selected by the guidance counselors and their teachers. And I'm sure these criteria, you know, they're the same type of criteria that I trust Kevin exhibited when he was a youth, and as he does as an adult and on the police force. A consistently optimistic outlook in school and in life, outstanding community in school citizenship, encouraging and supporting others outside one circle of friends, and contributing enthusiastically toward the development of youth in the community. Now, in addition, we have a scholarship program for the graduating seniors, and they compete for a $1,000 scholarship, and that's awarded at honors night. Another one of the Optimist projects is to bring the splash pad here to the community, and we're doing fundraising now, and this will be across the street up by the swimming pool. Another fundraiser we're excited about that will be in conjunction with the Masons in the village board is to bring handicapped, accessible playground equipment to one of the parks in the community. So, these are just a few of the projects that we do in the community, but one of our favorites and that we've done for many years is to recognize an outstanding policeman every year, and also a fireman from the Oregon Brooklyn communities. So, we're recognizing Kevin for his outstanding vocation in his dedication and commitment to the community. So, I'm delighted to award Kevin with the... We have two awards. We have the Optimist Creed, and as you read through it, you'll see these are a lot of things that your fellow police officers have said about you, and this is the Oregon Brooklyn Optimist Officer of the Year Award. Thank you. Congratulations.
Kevin, do you want to say anything?
Absolutely.
You guys got like a half hour?
So, I just want to thank everybody I work with. Everybody that we work with is always on the same page as far as accomplishing whatever we need to accomplish. We all sacrifice a lot to get the job done. It's a fun place to work. It's not bad when you work with your friends, and then also, you do the job that you really like to do. I want to say thank you to my family, my parents, my father, mom always supporting me, even though she technically didn't want me to become a police officer in the beginning. My dad was a police officer for almost 30 years, and he's been kind of someone that I can lean on whenever I have stress or whenever I just want to decompress or talk about something, so I truly appreciate that. And then, also, I want to thank my fiancee Hannah as well. So, she takes the brunt of all the stress that I bring home on certain occasions, and she deals with it fantastically. So, I just want to say thanks to everybody, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So, lastly, we have several members of the department that have been with us for quite a while. So, would Officer Brian Lehman please stand up? I think I saw him here. 20 years with the Police Department. Detective Sergeant Chad Schaub, 10 years. Detective Jeremy Hatfield, 10 years. And Officer Ted Gilbertson and Officer Josh Coleman, who could not be here, also 10 years. So, thank you again. I appreciate everyone coming, appreciate you supporting the Police Department, to the Board, administrator team. Thank you again for allowing us to present at your board meeting tonight. I know they get to be long, so thank you again. So, we'll have refreshments in the community room after this. I would like, if everyone could help us out, stand up, turn your chairs around that way, that would be very helpful, and I will see you in the community room. Thank you again.
We're going to move a couple items up on the agenda. First is item 10-Q, discussion possible, Ashley, regarding Eagle Scout project for Andrew Thomas Palmer. The recommended motion is to approve the Eagle Scout project at Prairie Mount Cemetery headstone restoration. So, we need a motion, please?
So, move.
Second.
Thank you. If you'd like to come to a microphone, please, and tell us what you have planned. Sounds like a great project.
So, I had talked with Jeff Rao, who goes to my church, about doing some restoration to the first five rows of stones across from the McDonald's in the oldest section of the Prairie Mount Cemetery, and I kind of thought that it's the first thing that you see when you come into Oregon, and if it looks nice, it'll make the rest of the town seem nice. Not that it isn't nice. It is, but...
It could be a lot nicer.
Yes.
The cemetery.
It could. And we had talked about piecing, there's some stones that are in two pieces. We had talked about putting them back together with special epoxy and then cleaning and straightening stones, so it looks uniform and like a nice cemetery. Not that it isn't.
Like I said, it could be nicer. It has kind of gone downhill a bit over the years, and I agree. I know when going in and out of town, I look at that, and I think we need to start working on that now. That was in Jeff's plan to get going on that, so now we've got some extra help.
As part of the plan, I thought I could have a little more time on my hands to address plans like that, but I think when Andrew approached us about an opportunity for possible Eagle Scout projects, that was one of the ones that popped into my mind. And I think it's agree, when we went up there, we've actually met up there once or twice, and kind of walking around, it's one of those ones that actually the project can get a little overwhelming, and Andrew's done a nice job of kind of segmenting it and to say, okay, let's just look at these first five rows. Some of those headstones, most of them are in the early, or late 1800s, early, mid, late 1800s, and I think it's a good plan that we have, or that he has, you know, in store for it.
Yeah, so we appreciate your energy and ideas and work on this in advance.
Thank you.
Are there any questions, anyone has?
We would also, as part of any kind of approval, we would ask for kind of support to use funds out of the cemetery fund to be able to purchase the cleaning materials, and then I'd also like to have a staff member for about four hours on a Saturday to be able to operate the, we call it the mini digger, but the track vehicle out there, so we can safely be able to lift some of these headstones if they're, we want to be able to put a strap around them and be able to lift them without having to hurt people's backs and that type of thing, so.
Sure.
Just would ask for that support. That's part of the approval of the process.
Okay, yeah, that needs to happen too. So, are there questions or comments, everybody? So, again, we appreciate what you have planned. We'll look forward to seeing the progress here, and it will make the entrance to the village look better. We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have the motion, and second to approve this, including some supplies and about four hours of our labor, and if we find we need more, I'm sure we'll approve that too.
Okay, thank you.
So, with that motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
We're going to go to Doug, item 11A, right now, the park board.
The recommended motion is to approve placing a bench in honor of Al Miller in Lerner Park.
Wendell, you want to make a couple comments? Welcome Wendell Motzky to see him, a couple comments about this.
I'm Wendell Motzky from the Rotary Club, and Al Miller, I would think most of you know Al Miller, has done an enormous amount of work on Lerner Park. We consider him to be the father of Lerner Park, and the Rotary Club wanted to recognize him, and wanted to purchase a bench to place in Lerner Park, Lerner Park, I'm sorry, to recognize that, and Arlen Kai came up with a further idea, and that's to put a plaque on a stone out at the entrance to Lerner Park. There is, at the entrance to the right, there is a big rock that's like a table, and there are rocks around it that are like seats, and Al kind of visioned that as a console situation. So, Arlen wants to put a plaque on that rock. So Arlen wants to put a plaque on that rock. And so we've included that. And I'm going to, I've only got one copy of the plaque with me and I've got two copies of the, what the bench would, would be.
Yeah, we, I think it's good. I got the picture of the rocks and stuff up there first.
Oh, yeah, the rocks there are...
Oh, I'll take it as a record. Thank you.
So the, the plaque will go on the big rock on the side where there's no, no stones around it, right there where the arrow was. It'll be on the top. And the bench will be placed where Al wants it, under an oak tree. And Jeff and I will go out there with, with Al to place the bench. And we would like the village to install the bench. We've paid for it and we would like the village to install it.
We'll do that.
Yeah, we've, we've done this in the past with other people who've donated benches and we've then, we have individuals that do concrete really well and we'd be able to do that.
Yeah, okay. So we got the motion. Sorry, I did not get a second.
Second.
Thank you. So that's all set. Are there questions for Wendell?
I want to also just bring to your attention, as was in the packet from the park board, or was it the park board? Yeah, was it the park board? Just the, the new sign that the Rotary is installed in the last year. Wendell, you maybe want to say something about that? I don't know. But it's, it's just a very unique sign. I think it's very unique for the park and, and just a nice, a nice addition that you guys have made.
The sign and the plaque and the bench, we're looking to dedicate those on Earth Day, which is April 22nd.
Yeah.
If they don't happen to be installed, we'll at least have them there.
Yeah, okay. Other questions or comments for Wendell? Okay, so seeing that, we have the motion and second to approve placing the bench and the plaque in honor of Al Miller in Lerner Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
See you when it is spring again.
Yeah.
And thanks to the Rotary Club, Wendell, you for doing this. We appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay, we're on to item five, public appearance. Item A, discussion village planner regarding the following and possible board action. I'll read the things that are there. There are three of them. Future village hall, including possible comprehensive evaluation of building and systems in 2019 budget. An update regarding new senior center complex. Senior Center Director Rachel Brickner has some new ideas to share with us. And then finalizing civic campus plan for adoption by the village board. So the board action night would be if we want to vote to give them a comprehensive evaluation of the building and system in 2019 budgets, not to decide on option A or B. It's just a preliminary discussion on option A and B. So just wanted to clarify that. So that's what's up and we will turn it over to Mike Slavny. Welcome, Mike.
Nice to be here. Well, when we were working on the civic campus plan in 2016 and 2017, the main focus was on the library and the senior center with the village hall as a third priority. And we've been asked to take another look at both the senior center and the village hall. And the packet contains two additional options for those buildings. In option A, we would retain the older part of the village hall and put an addition on the south side of the village hall, which would cover most of the front, I would call it, the front parking area, the parking area to the south of, of the building. And the evaluation that was done by Epstein U and Architects identified the current square footage of village hall at just over 15,000 square feet with a 20-year need of about 19,300 square feet. And if the village hall addition were two stories, we would get right into that ballpark that was identified by Epstein U and. By putting the addition on, we could provide a fully ADA compliant entrance and access to the building. We would, we thought we would either retain the existing elevator or provide another elevator for the addition so that we had access all the way around. And then the, the senior center, the current square footage is about 7,775 square feet with Epstein U and identifying a need for 16,500 square feet. And on the diagram for option A, if we used the existing pad for the library, we have more than enough room. We have over 18,000 square feet of, of room on that site under option A. If we go to the second option, I'll start with the senior center. We were wondering just how much room we'd have on, on a, a ground floor situation if we used both the existing senior center and library site. And you can see we can get up to over 31,000 square feet. We have ample room to work with. You'll note that both of these options leave the Masonic Lodge intact, the Oregon Bowl intact, the post office and the frontier switching building intact and really are only dealing with village properties. So if, if the library gets relocated to the Methodist Church site, we've got a lot of room to work with for many years to, to come without having to rely on acquiring additional properties in the downtown area. Option B also shows an alternative for village hall where we would essentially place a new village hall building in the parking lot that we have near the three-way intersection. We would leave the band shell intact and we would shift and enlarge the parking on this block by putting it where the existing village hall building is, which would in some ways provide a more central amount of parking for all village functions and could serve the senior center in an overflow situation or potentially in the long run, help address parking issues with the fire station. That option would have the advantage of seeming to stretch the, kind of the urban core of the downtown. This would be a, a multi-story building and we could provide that up near the sidewalk and kind of stretch the downtown around the corner and continue the momentum for redevelopment that we've been experiencing lately in the downtown. So these were two options that were not fleshed out in the previous set of alternatives. We feel that we don't have to rely on any other properties to become available to accomplish these and we thought it would be a good idea to bring these back to you just to show how much room we have to work with and what can be accomplished with the space we already have.
Hey, Mike, what about option C where the senior center footprint showing 31,260 square feet would house both the senior center and the village hall?
We, we would need about 35,000 square feet, 36,000 square feet. So I, I think it's, it's possible to fit the building if we went with a rectangular building by filling in that area that Jeff is pointing to there. I think the main concern would be parking. We, we wouldn't have as much parking as proximate to the building as we would probably need.
So where would the proximate parking be in option B?
It would be behind the, the proposed building where this building sits now.
And where would the proximate parking be if you expanded the footprint of the senior center?
Right where the arrows. Right, so we have the proposed parking for the senior center to the north of the arrow, right there. That would be the, the parking that's currently identified for senior center use under either option A or option B. So the nearest parking, if we combine the buildings, would be back at, at this site.
So you just had the arrow on that parking there. What happens to that?
That would stay.
So why would that not be considered proximate parking?
It's proximate, but it's the right amount of parking to serve the senior center.
I see.
And maybe not both functions. You know, on a night like tonight, it would probably serve both functions.
Does that serve the senior center if affordable housing goes above the senior center as well?
Yes. Because there would be, by putting the building at that location, we could get parking underneath the building.
And I, I'm still wrestling in my mind, so how many parking lots does village hall need when it's open?
How many parking lots or parking spaces?
Spaces.
Spaces? When that, when the building would be completely built out or currently, Jeff?
So in my mind, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to flip-flop parking spaces because the village hall is open from 7:30 to 4:30. So most people would be coming home, if it was a residential area, they'd be coming home after 4:30, but it's not a resident, residential, it's senior. I don't know how many seniors are driving. The senior center's open during the same hours that the village hall's open. So I'm happy to take your word, for word on it, but in my mind, the math just doesn't add up.
Right, so the, the typical rule of thumb for the village hall would be one parking space for every 300 square feet of floor area. So the 19,300 square feet would yield about 68 parking spaces.
Jeff, Rachel and I have, mainly Rachel, sorry, we have some, she has some different ideas where, what you would add on to the senior center in that area where you're thinking of where the village hall would go. That, that's sort of five. Bless you, Steve.
She has different ideas about what?
The second bullet point on the agenda under number five.
Yep.
You're saying, you're saying you think the village hall would fit there? We have different ideas where we would, we would use that extra, extra space for. Jeff, can you point to that, please?
Yeah, I see it.
Oh, he's left. AV got left.
I, I see it. So that would be helpful. Because that's 19,000 square feet more than what the senior center needs in the capacity buildings, or not 19, 15,000 square feet more than what the senior center calls for.
Yeah. So Steve, could Rachel maybe talk about?
Yeah, I was going to ask Rachel.
So what we have been hearing from seniors is that they think it would be a wonderful opportunity to add a gymnasium to the senior center with a walking track. Because right now, the gyms in the community are full to bursting and beyond. Our exercise classes are growing at a tremendous rate. They, we have run out of space. We've run out of opportunity to schedule any more classes because we're out of space. And we have an inappropriate floor for seniors to be doing a lot of exercising on. Basically, we have concrete with laminate on top of it. And if any of you do much for any length of time on concrete floors, you know it's not very friendly to joints, especially if you start doing aerobic activity on it. So one of the possibilities as we start to conceptualize what, what a future senior center looked like is a year-round opportunity for seniors to exercise in an appropriate facility for them. So that's one thought. The other thought is intergenerational programming is really gaining a lot of traction around the country. We find that when you put seniors and youth together, they both benefit pretty dramatically. And so I've started the process of reaching out to the school district to see if they're interested in potentially considering a pre-K site at the senior center, which could potentially be an income stream for the center if somebody's renting that space, but also offers some really wonderful opportunities for seniors and youth to, to come together. And that, the studies show that, you know, seniors are healthier, they fall less, they are much more engaged, children do better on reading tests, they do better on measures of attention deficit disorder behaviors and things if they have the opportunity to work together. So, you know, as we conceptualize what might be down the road for a senior center, we are thinking about some of those kinds of ideas.
And then let me take it even further. When you look, when you go back and look at the Spacenee study, there's nothing being identified to where we would house a new park and rec department. And we're going to eventually have a park and rec department. So I, I've been thinking after, Rachel and I have had this discussion a few times, that that's where we'd go on that block. You'd be a block away from JC Park West, a block away from the youth center. And, and, and as we would go forward on something like this, we'd obviously be talking to the school district, as Rachel mentioned, being right across the street from the pool and, but again, you know, you're, you're probably talking about maybe doing this complex and maybe starting to build it in 2022, somewhere in there if the library gets built in 2020. So we've got some time to think about it. But I think we're starting to envision this more than just being a senior center building with, with housing above it. I think we're going to try to make it into some type of recreational complex as well.
And how many parking spaces does option B add? Mike or Mike or Jeff? Steve?
I have no idea.
Thanks for including it.
Option B netted about 14 spaces over what we have now.
I, I will say that if we go ahead with option B just for the senior center area, I, I think that possibly, depending on how much this would be expanded, we may have to look at acquiring some, some property at some point. I mean, not right in tomorrow or even when it gets built, but you, maybe you want to, that board at that time will probably want to be thinking about that. I mean, and I think Mike will agree with me that once, once the library is built and we turn our attention to the senior center, we're going to want to do, we're going to want to hire an architect and do a, a site plan and lay out these options. I mean, again, this is just a conceptual layout. At that point, we maybe will incorporate the post office building, you know, if it's three or four years from now. So there's a lot of things that we would want to take a look at this block and try to make sure we lay it out the best way possible.
Other questions and comments?
I have two. And a couple of people asked me today, two things that I'm not sure maybe were in previous discussions. I didn't see them in the packet, so apologize if I missed them. First was, had, have we considered putting the village hall at the old Methodist site? Was that a thing that was discussed? I...
Instead of the library?
Yeah, and then keeping the library downtown by the senior center? I can bring that one back up, but she asked me, so I was like, oh, I'll see.
I, I mean, we, we talked about all the possi, actually, when you looked at Vanderwall's initial layout for the church property, the senior center was actually on there because we thought that's where the senior center should go.
Oh.
Doesn't mean, that was just, you know, we, I think we were just sort of using, again, it was like a, it was like a map like this, Jenna, it was just kind of a conceptual layout.
Okay, so it's not existing?
And, no.
Okay.
And, but then, you know, we looked at all the different, different possibilities, but the neighborhood really grabbed on to with a lot of interest that the library go up there, that it'd become sort of a library slash community center. And so the library board got very excited about it as well.
Okay. Second question that was asked to me that I didn't have an answer to was for option B, for the parking, like if the village hall is facing Janesville Street, the parking behind there, could that be potentially turned into a small parking structure, like a two-story parking ramp? I didn't know if it could support that, but to help alleviate some of the parking issues? I don't know.
It's probably a little bit small of a footprint for it to be cost-effective.
Okay.
I think the soils are fine there, but it's, it's probably not the right bang for the buck.
Okay.
And, and smaller downtowns have, I don't, Mike agrees with this. My, my reading of articles about it have not had good luck with putting in parking ramps in small downtown areas. And mainly, it's the issue of safety af, after work, and when it's dark out, will people use it?
Thank you.
Sure, good questions.
Thanks, Jenna. Other questions?
I'm excited that we're talking about Village Hall.
I know you would be.
I think you're the one that got this back up and down, so good for you.
I think it's important to, yeah, to keep looking at, at all of the departments and to make sure that we are planning for the future for every department. I think it's a good thing.
Would there be any downside to moving the Village Hall to Janesville Street?
The, the, the biggest downside is we'd be flipping essentially public parking, getting it away from Janesville Street where it's in sight of the other businesses at the Triangle. But we pick up parking spaces, and I, I think we strengthen the image of the community of the downtown. It's a trade-off.
So, so the board should know that when you, in, in this plan here, when you move the, if you build the Village Hall on Janesville, you're knocking this building down, which is a whole nother subject. Right, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to Mike this afternoon. I like, I like the exterior of this building. I like old buildings, but, you know, this is very preliminary, but I really like the idea of Village Hall on Janesville. I think it, it makes a real impression downtown, and much more than a parking lot. It's tied right in with the Van Schiller, and we obviously have a long ways to go before we decide on this. But I, I like the plans that have come forward. You know, I have to say, I really like the idea of a senior center with an exercise room. So I'm going to speak for myself as a senior, way too far along, and probably Mr. Bolick too, but he can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
No, you're a senior.
So speaking. Well, I forget once in a while.
Well timed.
So I'm never sure, but.
I am, Steve, I am too now.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, thinking of, of my dad in particular, who became less mobile and started having more health issues, but then myself, and, you know, trying to focus on two or three types of exercise on a regular basis makes a huge difference as you age. And I'm sure Rachel can attest to that. It's, and you won't know until you get there, but, but she'll eventually get there. It must be a long ways off. But, but to have that for the seniors, I think, would be a very impressive and functional and healthy thing to have, if that can be worked out. And again, obviously, there's a long ways to go before we make these decisions, but I didn't want to make an initial comment on that.
And I think the idea would be is that if you're living in that building, you would be able to park underground. You'd have the senior center in the building, and then this gym would be connected to that, to the building. So if a day like today, you would, you'd never have to go outside?
Yeah.
Be very attractive.
So I'm going to throw one more little thing out that has kind of been there for me for a long time, and it keeps getting pushed back.
I don't think you can get the bike trail to the senior sign.
We'll see, I'm working on it. Is that I really think we need a new sign for the senior center. The seniors are important. They've contributed a lot to life, and that sign doesn't contribute anything right now, as far as I'm concerned. It's not Rachel's fault. It's just been there forever. So I'm just throwing it out there, something to think about as time goes on here. And Mike didn't know that was coming. He probably wishes it didn't, but.
You, you brought it up before. I'm not surprised by it.
So just to throw that out.
That's fine.
Add a little variety. Other thoughts, comments, ideas?
So Steve, can I steal one of your ideas that you and I talked about? So, so Steve likes the current Village Hall, and actually, it was funny, I was just telling Jeff that I was looking, we, we got this great book from the historical side that we purchased, which I'll share with the village board. And I, I was flipping through it before the meeting, and I came upon the photograph that showed this building being dedicated on July fifth, nineteen forty-one. And there, people were standing that way into the, into the parking lot. It was a pretty cool photograph. So, so Steve's idea is that you, you move the, you build a brand-new Village Hall along Janesville Street. And I will tell you, that will require a referendum, just, you know, by state law, unless they change the law, but I doubt they will. Then Steve wanted to think about keeping this building and then, and selling it, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and selling it to a Gary Gorman or someone like that, that would, that would keep it and fix it up and, and redevelop it. But then that would then, we would have to identify additional parking at some point. And again, I think that, you know, if we're going to do this, we would want to hire someone, and maybe it is going to be Vanderwall or somebody to help us do smart planning in the downtown area. Maybe have to maybe go beyond that, maybe hire an architect possibly at some point is.
Well, to evaluate the ability to reuse this building.
Right, and that's, that's on, yeah. But I mean, as far as if, if we wanted to build a new Village Hall, keep this one, we'd have to be forward-thinking about where are we going to be parking, and we'd have to identify potential sites. You know, in the downtown master plan in Tiff, Tiff Five, there is possibility of the Hitching Park being expanded at some point, you know. And I don't know if that's, that'd be too far away, but we'd have, we'd have to think about that. If, if we want to, if we want to build a new Village Hall and keep this building, we'd have to find additional parking somewhere in the downtown area.
Would, for option B, well, and I guess, yeah, it would just be option B, would it be a candidate for putting parking underneath the building? Like we've talked about with the senior center, or is that how?
For, for the Village Hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, but long, long-term, you know, if the building's going to be here for a hundred years, it's.
And the soils and the water table would allow that, right in that area?
That's my best guess. We, we'd want to really investigate it, but the general finding was the farther south we went from the Hitching Park, the, the better things looked.
You, you are near Spring Street, so that should get it.
Yeah.
I always tell people that. Spring and Brooks, there's a reason why they're named that, you know, in order.
The buildings that have basements, they're, the basements all have water in them year-round, those businesses. And like Jeff's new building doesn't even have a basement.
Yeah.
Yeah. So FYI, it might be wet in the underground parking center.
Another thing we'll want to discuss is if, if you landlocked the fire department, then you take away an option.
Right, and that's what Steve and I were talking about also this afternoon, that I think as we get further along, we obviously want to reach out to, to the fire chief in the district and talk about their plans. But, and by that time, I, I know they're going to be doing a, a service area plan, and I think it'll all tie in, Jeff, at some point.
So it's not a question of if the fire department's going to need more space, it's a question of when.
Right.
And, and then where?
Exactly.
Yeah.
The other question, are you going to stay downtown, or are you going to look at a different, a satellite station or something like that?
Yeah, so if you, if you redevelop this into a for-profit building, you wouldn't have that option to stay downtown. I can't imagine how you could reconfigure the fire department between Waterman Park and the fire department to maintain parking spaces and increase the footprint of the fire department.
Yeah, if you built a new Village Hall, kept this building, you know, cut off the nineteen eighty version of it, where the chamber is, expand the fire district this way, then, then you've, you've completely lost all the parking downtown.
Yeah.
You couldn't do that.
So that's just something for the discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, along with parking too, other options are to buy some other properties adjacent to this area. I don't want to panic people out there when I'm thinking about that, but in the future, that may be something that happens as we look about expanding other places for property we don't currently own. We could look into that too.
Yeah, I mentioned to Steve that, you think about it, we reached out to the property, or Vanderwall did in twenty sixteen. So I mean, it'll be, you know, it'll be seven years after that, you know, like the village would be wise to do that same outreach again and say, are you, have you changed your mind? Not that we're forcing you, but are you, have you changed your mind? And, you know, just to do that at that point.
Yeah.
For planning purposes. As we know, a lot can change in five or six years in a downtown area.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments?
So we do have one item for action here, and that's the first bullet point, which is the future of Village Hall, including a possible comprehensive evaluation of the building and the systems in the two thousand nineteen budget. So staff just wants direction, but we want them to go ahead with that. From our discussion, it seems to me like that's a pretty, pretty important piece to do.
What does it do for us?
Tells us how this building could be used, what it might cost.
If, if, yeah, for example, if the board wanted to go with option A, which, which is the, again, take the old, you know, the nineteen eighty section off, keep the forty-one section and go that way, Jeff, you would know what it would take then to, to renovate this building and keep it as a Village Hall.
So if we do that, how do we retain or grow the parking spaces?
If you go, well, if you go back to, you go back to.
If you go back to A.
A, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're taking off, you're basically taking off.
Go back to the one?
Could you please?
Yeah, sorry. I was thinking.
So, so you're taking off the, I, I'm going to call it the section that was built in the nineteen eighties. You're putting the parking there, you're moving the parking there.
So that's the same number of spots that we have currently if we, if we reconfigure the building on that site?
It's a wash.
It's even?
I mean, I think Jeff, Jeff Ral can attest that this building has lots of issues, right, Jeff?
Right, well, I mean, I think one of the things that we're talking about, looking at an evaluation of this building, it's always, it's always very good to start looking at whether it's worth saving. And there's the architectural component, which I agree, it's kind of neat when you see these old buildings and everything like that. But I've had the opportunity in the last couple of years to kind of, shall we say, go into the bowels of this room, or of this building, and some of the steam systems and boiler systems that we have are extremely outdated and, and old. I mean, you heard it during the presentation by chief, that wasn't gunfire, that was just the boiler kicking on and, and the steam going through the system. So, you know, we're kind of inching along or kind of band-aiding together systems and everything like that. And so there's, there's those type of systems to look at, and then there's also, we still, no matter what we do with this building, it's still, what, four and a half feet below grade, you know, and we always have flooding issues and, and moisture problems and everything like that. But I think it's good to take a good, solid evaluation of the whole systems and mechanical systems, electrical systems, the ADA compliance, any kind of emergency access, you know, safety, as far as like we really only have two exits from this building, and they're both out the same side of the room. So there's all those things that get evaluated when you look at a, a building like this moving forward.
So does anyone wish to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we include the possible comprehensive evaluation of building and systems in the two thousand nineteen budget.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So a discussion on that?
As I say, again, we're not going to do anything, this, you, this would show up in my draft budget. You'll have numerous time to discuss it before we do do it. You know, we, we may get to that point and realize it doesn't make sense to do it. The board decides not to keep the building, then we obviously wouldn't do it. So it's just, it's just kind of a placeholder for the nineteen budget.
Yeah, it doesn't say we're going to do this. It says we're going to look at doing it. We'll get a chance to bolt on it, to actually do it, or not do it. And the budget rolls around.
Yep.
It's not a huge decision tonight.
So any comments on that? So we have the motion second to look at Village Hall and include possible comprehensive evaluation of the building and systems of the two thousand nineteen budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Okay. That's all set. Anything else on item five?
Just that, Mike, we, we do want to get the civic campus plan approved this year, sort of get it, get it behind us. So we have to, is, is there a public hearing required for this?
No.
No, but the planning commission has to recommend it. So we're going to, we're going to finalize it and give it to the planning commission to look at, and then they will come back to the board for final approval.
Okay.
And again, it's, it's a working document, doesn't mean it's, you know, it's going to change numerous times, but at least it'd be nice to. It's, it kind of reminds me of when Mike did the downtown master plan in two thousand. We, we've used it as a guide for the last eighteen years.
So Amanda, did you have any questions? Are you okay?
Most of them were answered, but now it just.
You, you would need to come to the microphone, please. That doesn't pick up on TV otherwise.
Hi, Amanda Peterson, Village of Oregon. I'm wondering about process here because I'm hearing you say that even, that there isn't a public hearing provider, necessary, required for looking at the plans again. But I think from people that I've been talking to, I think the public wants more input. And the last time I remember having any say was with the Lego night. That was a long time ago. I think some things have changed, and I, I guess I'd recommend that we do have another opportunity for the public to talk about it.
Yeah, we can pick an appropriate time to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else on item five? Anybody? Staff, anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, item six is approval minutes. There are none tonight. Item seven is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the amount of four million, three hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and thirteen cents for approval.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? This is ready.
Pretty quiet for that big a number.
Yeah, that's a big number. You have some major problems in the sewer building?
Yeah, the, in the, yeah, if we go back to kind of Staley, I believe, we had repairs at the wastewater treatment plant, building sixty, which is a sludge treatment building. We've had an air handler that had been actually forced on a hundred percent of the time for a, a very, very long time period. Had to, we actually had to retrace all of the control wiring in that building, and that cost a lot, a lot more money. And then we found some other building and fans and stuff in, both on building sixty, that did not have access points to be able to service, and so we had to rent a lift for that, and just some usual stuff. But a lot of that comes out of the equipment replacement fund, which we, you know, we'll, we'll talk about a little bit later as well. But that's, that's what that fund is there for.
And then on the, on Arbor Systems, we had tree removal. Is that, are those hush trees?
No, those, those trees were actually over on the, the park, and I, forgive me, I don't remember the name of it, the one off of South Woods Edge Drive and Lynn Trail. There's a forested park that's behind there, and a couple of trees were brought to our attention that might be hazard trees. And we had arborists look at them, I looked at them, and Gary looked at them, and we all agreed that about ten trees had to come down.
I think it's, I think it's Stone Ridge? Park, I don't know.
I'll have to get a park map on this someday so I can, so I can reference that, but it's, yeah, it's the one that's behind South Woods Edge Drive there.
I think it is.
And Alpine Meadows.
So they're just basically condemned trees?
Correct. They, and, and what we do with them, we hire Arbor Systems, they're trained to be able to fell the trees, and then our staff is capable of handling the trees once they're down on the ground. It's just a safer way for us to do it.
Thank you.
Other questions? So we have a motion second for vouchers in amount of four million, three hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and thirteen cents. Roll call, please.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Bolick?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item eight is community input. Anybody in the audience wish to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll go to item nine, proclamations and announcements.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Paul, Paul, you hear this for those two items for the cable TV? Would you mind skipping, I'm sorry to interrupt you like that.
No, that's fine. That's no problem.
It would be ten M and ten N, those two cable items.
Okay. So item ten M, excuse me, discussion possible action regarding closed captioning and the Americans with, with Disabilities Act ADA requirements. Recommended motion is to hire attorney Mike Bradley of Bradley, Berklin, Hagan, and Herbst of Woodbury, Minnesota to review the village's public, educational, and governmental access channel compliance with ADA requirements. Funding would come from franchise fees. So Paul, do you want to make some comments, please? I'll make sure, do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Okay.
Oregon Cable Access. From what I know from Wisconsin Community Media, which we are a partner and of, they are a lobbyist organization for peg stations such as Oregon Cable Access. The industry is looking at technology costs, everything involved with putting, with getting ADA compliant for meetings such as this and for broadcasts altogether. It's quite expensive to have instant closed captioning services. It's about a buck, about a hundred fifty dollars an hour, so a meeting like this would be pretty pricey for one evening. You add that up over the months of, and year, you're looking at seven to fifteen thousand dollars of a financial impact with the technology and software needed to be able to broadcast in closed captioning. We, there is an exemption that's, it's a financial and administrative burden that would be too great for our organization to handle. So we are looking at, we're hoping that the village would assist us in hiring Bradley Associates. to look into this for us. They're, they're looking at getting a pool of can, of peg stations such as ourselves and getting enough money to investigate the situation for each individual station and apply either the exemption or some other way to hopefully get us to either comply within a financial avail, you know, a way we could do it financially or, or get us, uh, help us get the, the easement, or I should say the exemption.
Exemption.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, they, they need 20, at least 20 communities to participate.
Yeah. It's a thousand dollars, right?
And then if they, they get up to, in event that's, if four or more cities participate, then they'll prorate the...
Yeah.
Is that something that cable and franchise fees could be used for?
Yep.
Okay. And we have enough to do that, right?
Oh, yeah.
Currently, there's also another thing going around in the state legislatively that one state senator has, uh, has been lobbied to put forth a vote that, um, put forth a proposal into law that finance, that franchise fees are no longer...
Yeah. That's actually our next item, Paul.
Oh.
That's a separate thing.
Jumping ahead. So, there's that, too.
It's not too hard to get ahead of us, but...
So, no, no, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
So, we, we know that there's other villages and other communities that are able to handle this. There are some who are dropping out of the, they're not broadcasting at all anymore. The big cities are able to handle it. They planned for it. There are others places like Stoughton, I believe they are not currently broadcasting. Some have the equipment and are able to do it, some are not, we are not. This building here is definitely not.
Okay, are there questions for Paul? Comments, anyone?
Well, I just want to thank Paul for bringing all this to attention in the village. It's a very high-level professionalism that you continue to exhibit, leading the OCA, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anything else? So, we have the motion second to hire attorney Mike Bradley of Bradley, Berkland, Hagan, and Herbst of Woodbury, Minnesota, to review the village's public, educational, and governmental access channel compliance with ADA requirements. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Excuse me, item N, discussion possible action about the threat to cable TV franchise fees. Recommended motion is that village staff would email village's state senators indicating the Oregon Village Board opposes, inserting language in the Senate Bill 425 that would end, sunset, or reduce cable TV franchise fees. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Anything else you want to say on this, Paul? It's kind of what it says, right?
It's exactly what you said, thank you.
Any questions or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, now we're back to nine. Item A, board comments? Anyone, anything? Okay. Item B, staff comments?
My first item is I want to thank Jeff for setting up the audio, audio visually system. It's been great. We have used it for every meeting. We've used it for our staff meetings, it's been just great, and he, he took his own time to do it, and I appreciate it. I was really nice to recognize him for that, so...
Good job.
Thanks. No, no plaque?
That's coming.
Go flag.
Oh, there, there you go.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
No, no, I appreciate, no, I'm glad to, I'm glad I'm working on it.
Good job, Brian.
How about a proclamation? Would that be...
I'll work, I'm one.
I'm thinking a sign.
We'll put it on the monitor.
Yes.
Jeff Ralde?
Could you make that, Jeff?
I'll put a new banner up there.
I think we should move on to item two.
Just a reminder for April 5th, that there's gonna be the Crime Prevention Workshop in the community room next door to us on April 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's being coordinated with Randy and Amanda and the police department, so... And then the election days, that's when, again, you know, I'll tell you that because election days, it may be impacting future board meetings, including April 2nd, so I listed out the upcoming board meetings. And we'll have the, you know, the two board meetings in the week of April 16th, which is the board meeting and then the organizational meeting, which is typically a very short meeting on April 17th. That's a Tuesday.
Any questions on those? Okay, item 10A, review Tuesday, February 19th and 20th rain event. And a thank you to Public Safety and Public Works employees for their efforts and for Jeff's leadership there. So, comments you want to make, Jeff?
No, I mean, it, this is one of those events that, that happens at a very inopportune time. When you have a rain on snow event is, especially when you have frozen ground with frost to about two feet, as we said in the paper and, and in this memo, it's, there's really zero infiltration. So, the entire area is filled, is basically impervious and has 100% runoff. And, and so, we saw a lot of water where we normally wouldn't see water in places. And areas where we do have, I call it minor flooding, was even worse. But I'm proud to say that our systems, our, our street systems, our, our culverts, everything like that, the guys did a really nice job of keeping all those open. Everything operated exactly how it should. Other than, you can see in the, the photo, or photo, there's a photo of one person's backyard. And we're gonna be probably talking to the village board and, and probably Public Works Committee in the future on how the village would propose, if any, to try to do any kind of fixes with some of these areas. There's a couple of areas in our village that people have very low-lying lots and, and they have reoccurring problems like this. This one was especially bad, but...
Where is this, Jeff?
This is off of Sterling Street, over there near, near South Main. This is rarely seen actually this high even during some of our, our winter or summer storms and everything, where it's almost to the bottom of the, the bridge there. This is out there at Keller Alpine, just beyond Ash Street. There has a red ball in there, I don't know why, but it's, that's just a little more view looking up towards the Methodist Church up there.
But as I mentioned in my email to the board when I sent you some of this information, the good thing is that North Brook did not flood.
Yeah, we did not have to close.
Improvements worked, which is, that's a major accomplishment that we did not flood that street out.
Yeah.
And I will admit that, or I should acknowledge too, that the day before Jeff's staff anticipated this happening, as he mentioned, they went out and cleaned the culverts out, which helped a lot.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, our improvements in the past few years and, you know, and the work of our crew really worked well.
Yep.
It's nice to see. Other questions on that? Okay, item B, update regarding Jefferson Street Parking Lot and Estimated 2018 borrowing for the project.
So, this, this is a spreadsheet that Jeff and Lisa and I have put together, wanting to give the board just a summary of, of the cost for the parking lot and the streetlights over there. And, and just want to, just bring your attention that, you know, we're gonna have to borrow approximately another $400,000 to complete the project, right Jeff?
Yep.
Yep. So, it'll be part of the CIP and part of the 2018 borrowing when you, when you see it later. Probably a couple, probably in May, right?
Yep.
May or June, somewhere there, yeah.
Okay.
Mike, when your, your last note down there, the $800,000 incentive, is that the TIF?
Yeah, so make sure you, you know, or knew that it didn't, it wasn't included in this, Jerry.
Right. That's the TIF, okay.
Yep.
Questions on that? Okay, item 10C, discussion possible action on Jefferson Street and South Main Street Parking Lot Lighting and Electrical Improvements. Project bidding, recommended motion authorize Public Works to advertise and commence the bidding process for Jefferson Street and the South Main Street Parking Lot Lighting and the Electrical Improvements Projects.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Is that project still on schedule?
Jeff?
Yes, um, yes, we're hoping, we're hoping that, uh, it's a few weeks behind, actually. And I'm hoping we can catch up with the bidding process and everything.
So, when do they start letting people move in?
Oh, in, in that, are you talking Jefferson? Well, Jefferson Crossing Project...
I got, yeah.
Yeah, is, is still on schedule, I believe, until mid-June to mid, mid-July sometime in that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
But the electrical work will start, actually, Alliance Energy's gonna be in in the next couple of weeks to start the undergrounding for the wires. This portion of the project, which I kind of, it's not the private portion, but it's the village portion, that is going out to bid in the papers this week.
This will put everything underground, though.
Put everything underground, yep.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? So, item D, discussion possible action on the Perry Parkway Connection Project Bid Review and Recommendation. Recommended motion award the contract for the 2018 North and South Perry Parkway Utility and Street Improvement Project to Parisei Construction Company Incorporated with an estimated cost of $1,204,297.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we did get, we got five good bids back, and I, you'll see that I have a really nice range. Everyone kind of right in where we would want them to be. It was slightly lower than the engineer's estimate, but not grossly under, which is good. Lives a little, leaves a little bit of room for some contingency. Parisei Construction's a very good outfit, and our engineers recommended that. And I believe you got another, their recommendation...
They did, yep.
Also in your packet as well tonight. So, we'd recommend that you go ahead, go ahead with this and keep the ball rolling on Perry Parkway.
Are there questions?
Is there a recommendation in the packet on that?
It was, it was in, well, you have Jeff's memo, and then in your plastic folder, there was the memo from the...
Oh, okay.
It came a little, it came...
Right there, Jerry.
Afternoon late, unfortunately.
I was just gonna ask, Jeff, how do these numbers compare to what we budgeted?
Actually, they were right. We, we were budgeting right where the engineer was, was telling us. That was kind of our only measuring point, if you will. And so, that's where we had been budgeting. But we've been updating this kind of as we get something new come through each time. But I think we're, we're right on, right on schedule for where it is.
Good.
Just pray for a dry summer. Just cursed it right there.
Yeah, thanks, Jerry.
Did Parisei do the downtown? They did, didn't they?
It, it's a good contractor.
Yeah, I know, I remember that.
When Jeff told me who the little bid was, that was...
Yeah.
Provided a little bid, that was, yeah.
Yeah, that was good.
Excellent contractor.
So, they're bonded and everything?
Oh, they're, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they did a real good job with the downtown, all the way through.
Yep.
Other questions or comments?
My only comment, and I've said it before, I would really prepare to control the intersection at Perry and Janesville in the budget, and if you don't need it, you don't need it. But I have a, I have a strong feeling that once you open Perry Way, Perry Parkway up, you won't be able to turn on Perry Parkway from Janesville Street, or you won't be able to drive straight down Janesville Street anymore.
We've been talking about that, I think, Jeff.
Or, or a roundabout or something.
Yeah.
And that's still county, so that'll even kind of adds another level of, of complexity to it. But, yeah, we, we firmly believe both Perry and Park Street will see some traffic changes.
Will there be any accommodation for, for bikes at all?
On Perry Parkway, yes. It has a bike lane. And it has, it has a, has a bike lane. We're not striping the bike lane because there's no connection for it once you get over to the other side of the ice ring, arena. But we've actually, we're building it to a lip width of a driveline plus a bike lane. And then we also have an eight-foot wide pedestrian path that's off-street that goes along the entire route.
Excellent.
Yep.
Is there room for a roundabout there?
Oh, now we're back on the intersection, the, shifting gears. Room for a roundabout likely at Park Street. If it'd be an option now, it's close to another roundabout, so there are some distances you have to, to look at. A roundabout at, I'll call it the Wisco Corner there, would be very, very tight. I don't think that would fit.
Probably lights.
Yeah, it'd be a signalized...
Okay. I just didn't think there was room for a roundabout, that's, but that's just a rough guess.
Yeah. Good. Other questions or comments? So, we have the motion second to award the contract for the 2018 North and South Perry Parkway Utility and Street Improvement Project to Parisei Construction Company Incorporated, estimated cost of $1,204,297. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
We, we are not buying the seal. That's on Jeff's memo. I don't want the board to be confused, okay?
I think I put this together on a Friday or something.
That was awesome, by the way. I really, really enjoyed that.
So, this you know...
I thought that was the Public Works man.
I laughed about that for a long time.
Do we have a motion yet? Is there a motion?
I beat the motion.
Oh.
I'm not gonna say anything.
Oh, that was great.
Okay, wastewater treatment plant 60 seal water replacement. Recommended motion award the contract to H.J. Purtsbourn for the seal water system replacement in the amount of $7,885. Is outlining the proposal, date, date of February 12, 2018.
So moved. I'll second that.
Thank you.
This is the second time we've actually replaced the system in 20 years. And I think when it was up last time, the idea was to possibly put it in PVC, and the decision was made to not do that. So, I try not to repeat from previous, maybe previous, uh, different opinions and stuff. But the seal water basically is just the, it's, it's a water supply that goes to the rotating shaft on a pump, and it, and it help lubricates the seal that's there and keeps the pump from, from leaking. So, it's not a seal as in, as I have on the memo line there. But, so, this is...
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank, yes, yes.
Appreciate that.
We do not have seals over it, it was not the Seaworld over there at the wastewater treatment plant. But, but this is actually replacing it with plastic pipe. It's very heavy-duty plastic pipe. The other nice thing about it is it does allow our, our individuals there at the plant to be able to repair plastic pipe easily, much easier than if they're having to do plumbing with soldering joints and everything like that. Normally, we, I mean, we have done a lot of work with Staley, but we did get a second cost opinion on it because I felt it was a little high, and H.J. Purtsbourn came back with a very nice price. It'd be funded through the Equipment Replacement Fund as well.
Questions or comments? So, we have a motion second to award the contract to H.J., excuse me, H.J. Purtsbourn for the seal water system replacement in the amount of $7,885. Is outlining the proposal, date of February 12, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, discussion of possible action on new color copier for Village Clerk's Office. Recommend motion approve a 60-month lease for a new color copier with Gordon Fleisch. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
We're gonna keep the old copier, correct?
Yes.
Are we gonna purchase or extend the warranty on the old copier?
We, we have a service warranty on it now. And, and actually, Lisa and, we were, we were just talking about that. If we see that it doesn't really get used a lot, we may just drop that. We're gonna, we're gonna sort of examine that as we go forward. And we're mainly gonna use it, it never fails that, since I've been here, the copier breaks down while we're doing the packets on a Friday.
Right.
And we're gonna run down to the police department or take it somewhere. So, it'd be nice to have a backup. It'll be nice for the front office staff to have it up, up close rather than having to run back to the copier where they make copies. And getting the color copier will allow us to make more colored copies for the board and for the packets and not having to take it out and take it someplace to get it made. We have a color printer that does an okay job, but it's, like, if you're gonna print 20 on it, it's, it's pretty hard to do so.
Maybe that seal would have been in color, right?
That seal would have been in color, that's great. Jerry, that's a great point.
Well, color is a seal, Jerry.
I don't know yet. I don't know if it's black or gray.
Depends on what kind of seal.
We've never seen a black and white one.
This one's black and white.
There might be some pink ones out there, I don't know.
So, we've been talking about doing this for a while, and we, and I thank Joy for working on this for Gordon Fleisch to provide this with us. And she was able to actually negotiate some additional copies for us, too, as part of this.
Other questions or comments? Swear the motion second to approve the 60-month lease for new color copier with Gordon Fleisch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Senior Senator requests to execute addendum to 2017 Purchase of Services Agreement. Yep. Uh, senior center requests to execute addendum to 2017 Purchase of Services Agreement of Dane County. Recommend a motion is to execute that addendum to the Purchase of Services Agreements. Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Thank you. Rachel?
Just a minor housekeeping detail. We knew this money, um, from the county was going to be made available for us to help cover the costs of attending the adult day program by some of our low-income seniors who struggle to pay for it independently, and the county did have 507 extra dollars they offered to us. Now, we just need to agree to it and, uh, ship it back.
Okay, thank you. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Rachel. Item H, discussion of possible action on a permanent substitute part-time crossing guard position. Recommend a motion approval to hire Andrea Suzanne Bealow as a permanent substitute part-time crossing guard at hourly rate of $13.70.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Anything to be said here, chief? We're all set from your end?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything further to add. Obviously, we need some replacements, so we don't have to use officers to do that, so.
Yeah.
It was nice of her to, to apply.
Yeah. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item I, status of February 19 hearing regarding Patrick Makovec matter. Uh, Judge Reynolds ruled that Stafford Rosenbaum may continue to represent the village in this matter, and our attorney is Ted Waskowski, so that's proceeding the way we'd like it to.
Correct.
Yep.
Just FYI.
Item J, uh, spring primary.
There's going to be one?
Some results there.
There's not going to be one?
This is for Supreme Court, the one that took place in April.
It's going to come, it's going to take place?
It did.
February 21st.
In February.
Yeah.
It's a 20% turnout, which is pretty good.
Yeah, they said the predicted 7.3%.
That's really a good turnout.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, uh, let me get this on here. So, so I'll get that proclamation on item K. Uh, this is for a motion to proclaim Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week. Uh, recommend a motion is to accept the proclamation designated April 15 through 21, 2018, as Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week. So, need a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, Doug's motion, second. Okay, so we got that. So, this is actually recognizing Lisa. Can you get the camera on her, Dan?
And other staff.
Right over here.
Extreme close-up.
We know it's a team, a team effort, but you're the leader there, and it's focusing on that, so, yeah, yeah. So, uh, we'll just go across the table, is that all right? Each take a whereas and read that. If you are like me and have a cold, a trouble talking or whatever, want to pass, that's fine, too. So, uh, the proclamation from Office of the Governor, whereas the Office of the Municipal Treasurer is a time-honored and vital part of local government that impacts the day-to-day life of citizens throughout the state, and?
Jerry?
Whereas the municipal treasurers provide the necessary financial information to governing bodies and agencies at the local county and state levels, and?
Whereas the municipal treasurers administer the procedures and keep the financial records that allow governing bodies to carry out their public function efficiently and confidentially, and?
Whereas all municipal treasurers are the official custodians responsible for proper management and investment of public funds, and?
Whereas 1,853 municipal treasurers and 72 county treasurers work together to collect all property taxes for their own municipalities and counties, as well as their local schools, technical colleges, and the state, and?
Whereas municipal treasurers continually strive to improve the administration of the responsibilities of the Office of the Municipal Treasurer through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and conferences across Wisconsin.
Now, now therefore, the governor of the state of Wisconsin give rightful claims April 15 through 21, 2018, as Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week throughout the state of Wisconsin, and commend this observance to all of our citizens, so. Thanks, Lisa, for you and your staff. I appreciate what you do. You bet.
Actually, I think we have the board on this, Steve.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Okay, item, uh, L, uh, discussion of possible action regarding resolution supporting the connection of the Oregon Rotary Bike Trail to the Badger State Trail. Recommend a motion is to adopt Resolution Number 18-D04, which supports the city of Pittsburgh's application to the Dane County Partners Recreation and Conservation Program to help fund the connecting of the Oregon Rotary Bike Trail to the Badger State Trails. Need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So, an update there. Um, most of you, I think, know Jill Parise, she was here a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we did talk to you about the bike trail. Uh, he mentioned, he, he offered a lot of support for that as far as his position. Uh, there's the money in there and the, and the grants, uh, that, that Pittsburgh can apply for. Mike and I met with, uh, Jason Gonzalez, the mayor in Pittsburgh, and Patrick Morris, the administrator, and, uh, I think it's fair to say they were quite enthusiastic.
Absolutely.
About getting this done.
Yep.
And they have engineers and planners and stuff right on staff that will work on this and writing the grant to the county and so on, so. Uh, this is to, to extend our support to them. Uh, we don't have money in the game. It's, it's not going to happen now. We did our part, so this will be them and grant money and so on, so. Questions or comments?
Can we put this map of the potential new site or new bike path extension on the website?
Sure. It, it's part of the packet, but we can, we can focus on it.
Yeah, I mean, put it out there because I'm sure a lot of people don't know about this. It happened real fast.
Yeah, but it took a long time to get this point, and then it happened fast. It was, it was good. It's exciting, I think.
I think President State deserves a lot of recognition for this.
Absolutely.
Oh, thanks. Probably more than I should be getting, but it's been a team effort by the board in pushing it, and, but I was very pleased with the reaction of Pittsburgh. Uh, they were ready to go. Uh, so, no guarantee it's going to happen, but.
Yeah, we're just fortunate that they're so bike-friendly. I mean, they're, that's, I mean, that's their focus, yeah.
And they want to move up a notch on the bike rating system for communities, and getting, getting this trail would help do that. And I don't know about you guys, but I still hear people say, let's get connected to Madison, so, uh, this would do that. It would be off-road along the county road, would not be connected to the road, be in the right-of-way but off the road, so, uh, it would still be, be along the road but not right adjacent to it, so it'd be nice.
Good.
And we can have a group ride into Madison.
There are, um, there are 75 bicyclists that biked from Madison to Oregon on Saturday morning, um, and all came to the Firefly. So, if you went down Main Street on Saturday morning, there were the whole lineup.
Really?
Were bikes against the.
Well, that's.
I saw them coming to town.
Yeah, so they're getting, I mean, they're getting here, we don't even have an easy way for them to get here.
Yeah.
So, it's exciting that, you know, Oregon is perceived as a destination to come to.
Where, where we would connect to the Badger State Trail on County M, it's about the same distance at that point to Paola in Oregon. And I know when Brad Munson kind of planned what we have done right now, he said this will turn Oregon into, uh, a bike destination much like Paola, he thinks, with our restaurants and the Firefly and that type of thing. Probably fall for some more real content, too.
I, and I think if this gets, when this gets done, I think it's going to happen, I really do. I'm pretty confident. I mean, we're going to have to probably do a better job of when those people are coming into the community to have better signage, like Don Marcus. We'll have to figure a way, because, you know, we always wanted to get people to come down, come through the bike trail and then come down Bathfish Creek. Well, that's, now that's going to happen for a while, so we're going to have to, once you get into the village, have some good signage to get you downtown and over the bills and so forth, yeah.
Other questions or comments? So, we have a motion second to approve Resolution 18-D04 to support the city of Pittsburgh's application to Dane County, uh, to help fund the connecting of the Oregon Rotary Bike Trail to the Badger State Trail. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So, we've done M and N. Item, excuse me, item O, review of new development projects map, uh, which will be on the village's webpage, and have a new map right back here, too, from the fly Dane.
Yep.
It's really nice. You can, you can find your house up there, except Jeff, because he's building one.
And I think we're going to, we're going to try to make this map more interactive so that when you would, somebody clicks into the subdivision or development, it would give more information. That, that's sort of the next step in this, uh, make it even easier to use in the future.
Okay, item P, discussion of possible action regarding 2017 budget amendment. Recommend a motion is to approve that amendment, so we, Amendment one, so we need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. This is the moving around of balancing off numbers, right, Lisa?
Correct. Some of the year-end cleanup.
Yeah, okay. Are there questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We've done Q, item R, discussion of possible action, change of agent, Quick Trip Number 302. Recommended motion is to approve change of agent to Kelly S. Westbury, a Quick Trip 302. Uh, Chief Brian Uwele has approved that as a satisfactory agent. So, need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We've done 11. Uh, item 12, minutes not requiring action. Uh, there are the minutes from the memorandum of understanding committee for the building and library, and we meet again tomorrow. Unfinished business, item 13, there is none. Uh, new business, new business, approve of pending new operator license is approved by the police department, Quick Trip 372, Anna Miller.
So moved.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item 15, there are some future agenda items. Item 16 would be a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thanks, folks. Got a lot done.